All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call please.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Hempel?
Here.
Hammond?
Here.
Mrs. Hempel?
Here.
No?
Here.
Schloss?
Here.
All right, um, we are going to, uh, rise for the invo- or rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I guess we're rising.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the manifold blessings that come from your hand. We thank you for health and strength and families and provisions of life. We're grateful for our leaders, for our superintendent and her administrative staff, for our Board of Education members, for the Corps of Heroes, our teachers who ultimately have the responsibility of delivering quality education to our students. Bring peace to our schools, protect our teachers, protect our students, we pray. Tonight, we ask for wisdom for each discussion and in every decision. May each decision be pleasing to you, and we'll give you the praise in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda is written.
Support.
I got a few things on the consent agenda. Do we need to take them off the table, or we can discuss them as we go to the consent agenda?
Um, we don't usually discuss under the consent agenda.
You can ask to have it removed.
If you make a correction, do you just move it?
You can ask to have it removed.
Oh, he's telling us. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I interrupted, Laura didn't hear you.
You can ask to have an item removed.
From the consent agenda? Okay.
Well, there's three of them.
Then you would ask for those three, whatever they are.
Okay. Uh, on the consent agenda, it asks to remove the minutes from the last two meetings, or not the minutes, the committee meetings and the overnight conference. A few discussions on those. Uh, that would be number E and, um, number two.
Committee, committee meeting minutes. Okay.
Buildings A and B.
They would go to separate business.
Yeah, you go to separate business and then vote on them after consent agenda.
Say that again?
You add them to, add them to the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
As separate items.
Okay.
And then vote on them.
Okay. So, do we need a, does that's the motion to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Support.
Um, any other discussion? We're gonna move those to a separate agenda items that we could discuss them. Okay, roll call.
So, the first roll call is to approve the agenda with the adjustments accordingly. Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so with the agenda approved, we can move to public comment. We have several here. Um, let's go with Dawn Rice. You could start with your name and address.
Dawn Rice, I live on Vance. You might know me as Beatrice Bugle online. It's my nickname. Got a couple things to talk about. Um, I see Amy's extension is still on the agenda. I'm not sure it's such a good idea considering, I think we need a resignation. And you guys gotta tough up and do it. Because right now, this board with this four to three vote, you're ineffective, you're inept, and you're incorrigible. So, the four that are standing there thinking that you're the majority and you know what's going on, there's things that you haven't even read. Uh, was there a vote on the blueprint? Anyone vote that in? Cause I know five months after the superintendent started working here, we got it. And then we lost 300 teacher, or 300 staff members. Nobody's happy, everybody's crying. I hear all of this in my office. So, I hear the regular Joes, not your constituents, the stakeholders. And there's a difference. So, tonight, we gotta talk about the truth, and it's not always kind. And then doing the right thing isn't always easy either. So, you guys have let the community down, our kids down, and our teachers down. Rosie, you worked with these people. Did you go to the meeting about, um, the climate survey? Did you even go? Did you read them? The teacher climate survey. It's sad, really sad. Things like, I don't know, they don't even have any control. Because the blueprint works from the top down. So, the superintendent is in charge, and then it trickles down. They get to tell ev- the superintendent is in charge of every aspect. So, now our teachers are working with administration coming in classrooms, and they get kind of, I guess they take notes, and then they get to talk to the teachers about how to teach their class or the curriculum, which, by the way, I think is programming. I seriously, I have looked into the blueprint, I can't find anything positive about it. In fact, I found several superintendents that left the building with the blueprint. Wes Bloomfield, four months, they said all it is is words and got rid of it. Um, it's based on reform. Who are we reforming? The new kids that we're bringing in that we're not vetting? Is there a committee for vetting the new students? What's our criteria? Do they gotta have a 3.0? Good attendance, anything like that? Or is it like our policy says, all, um, schools of choice students are welcome, all? So, now, we get some kids with discipline problems, or maybe special education problems, costs us more to deal with them than it would to just deal with our kids. So, I, some of this I don't understand, I'm sure you guys know better than I do. Um, but Amy's contract, it doesn't expire until 2021, what's the rush? I don't get it. Why do we gotta put an extension in there? Then, we can talk about the state of Michigan, the complaint that I filed with them, and asked them for an investigation. All eyes are on you guys. Everybody's watching. The state, Oakland schools, they're all looking because they know how bad it's been. And they're listening, you guys aren't. You think the online stuff, the social media is something just to blow off? It's not. That's the regular Joes talking. They're not keyboard warriors, they're talking about their community. So, we know that the superintendent has a history of the kind of treatment that our teachers are exactly complaining about. Um, her previous job, those teachers use the same words that our teachers used. Bully is a major one. Um, the teachers feel like they're insignificant, and so do the staff. Is this news to anyone that read? Did everybody read the teacher survey, the climate survey, or no? Oh, I can't ask questions, that's right. Sorry, I'm not gonna answer any either. Let's talk about how poverty-stricken we are. Well, I don't know about how many two-wage earners there are in Hazel Park, but I know I'm sick of their hearing, they're sick of hearing about poverty because they're out there busting their butts. And for the little portion that is poverty in Hazel Park, you're dragging us all down by saying that, especially in interviews in Birmingham. That was degrading.
Um, Ms. Rice, I just wanna remind you that we do have a time limit, so if you could-
Oh, I was pretty sure you'd go ahead with the time thing. That's all right. Social media, think of it as the Newtown Hall. You're not getting away from it, so you either join it, start listening to it, whatever. But, it's on you guys. Rachel, Laura, you guys grew up with Bev in the Hempels. You have seen them involved in the schools, your family's been involved in the schools, your family's been involved in the city. I couldn't imagine why they would be on boards with seeing the total destruction that has happened. And I figured it out because they don't know, because nobody's telling them. If they knew the effects that this program and the superintendent has had and really looked at it and researched it, they would understand what's going on, and they don't. And that's a lot of people, because you're pushing the positive instead of fixing the negative. So, two pa- two negatives can make a positive. And the four need to stop being negative and start working with the experienced people. You got 70 years' experience between the Hempels and Bev. And you are, I don't know, what's lacking your attitude, but whatever it is, you guys better start working together, cause this is not working. So, my next step, I promise you, in June, if this is not straightened out, I'm going after the 2,400 votes for Heidi, and I'm gonna get a recall. And I'm prepared to do so, cause I have nothing better to do but make sure things are right right here. Okay? All right, good. I feel much better, and now you know I'm real.
All right, uh, the next person that I had to, um, come up would be Melissa Baldwin.
Hi, I'm Melissa Baldwin, 1636 East Match. Um, just a quick, um, I guess, announcement. Um, I know there was some interest, uh, through the school board and hopefully through the community. Um, I am part of the Senior Parent Committee. We are in charge of planning the senior all-night party, or as we're calling it, uh, grad night for a class of 2019. Our fundraiser coming up, it's hopefully our biggest one, we just need a lot of participation to get the, uh, there's different levels of fundraising, if you get 20 people, it's 20 percent, we can get up to 50 percent if we get 50 people participating. So, we're really hoping for that, it's gonna be really fun. It is Thursday, the 28th of February, it is from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. You must pre-register. Um, that's pretty much it, it's gonna be a lot of fun, any questions?
Yes, pre-registering is doing it online.
Yes, you can do it on, you can call, um, if you want the phone number, I can give you the phone number. Uh, it's 248-850-7182, that's Painting with a Twist Ferndale. Or you can register online by looking up paintingwithatoys.com and finding the Ferndale location, and you'll see our painting in the calendar, looks like this. So, it's sure to be a lot of fun, and the money is gonna go to, uh, entertainment, providing the kids a fun sober night the evening of their graduation. So, thank you.
I know I'm planning to attend.
Awesome.
All right, next person we have is, uh, Bill Melching.
Good evening, thanks for giving me the chance to speak. Bill Melching, 223 Franklin Street, Boyne City, Michigan, 49712. Probably, for those who don't know, I know the board knows, I am the past Executive Director of Business Services for Hazel Park Schools, assigned to Hazel Park through the Intergovernmental Amendmental Agreement with Oakland Schools. And, um, I'm really here to ask the board a series of three or four questions tonight. First of all, and, and I understand you don't give answers tonight, so it's not what I'm looking for. First of all, is the board aware that there was a full investigation done by legal counsel paid for, or at least under the auspice of Oakland Schools into the work culture at Hazel Park Schools? If you are aware that there was such an investigation, have you seen the report? And if you've seen the report, what steps did you take to address any findings that might have come out of that report? And if you haven't seen the report, I would encourage you to get it. Now, I know that people try, some may say, hearsay, it's not true, it's made up, or it's exaggerated. I can tell you, I know it's not exaggerated because I personally am the one who filed that complaint with Oakland Schools into the work climate that I was working under at Hazel Park Schools. I know that for a fact, cause I actually have a copy of the email that I sent. I also know that I was interviewed, I know that the four, other three employees who were Oakland Schools employees assigned to the business office at that time were also interviewed, and I know several past employees of Oakland Schools assigned to Hazel Park were interviewed. I think that's an very important thing for you guys to look into, to know what it was. So, you probably under- ask, why would somebody from Boyne City, Michigan, who moved on be here this evening? And I gave a lot of thought to whether I was gonna come do this tonight or not, to be honest with you. Um, I have no stake in the game, I have no axes to grind, I'm really here for two reasons. First and foremost, there are still employees that I expect are probably still working under those same conditions that I had. Maybe not, maybe it's changed, I don't know that for sure. Also, the students, as if that climate, if, and it's if, that climate causes the turnover, or even part of the turnover that you experience in this school district, then that's injuring the kids, that's hurting the kids. Turnover like that is just not healthy for kids. So, that's all I'm here for. I leave it at your step now. I, I have no more to say about it other than encourage you to get your hands on that report, read it, and understand what went into it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Melching.
Now, everybody's right, I don't believe anybody here knew I was coming tonight. Not anybody. I kept it solely quiet to myself.
All right, um, next Republican, we have Bethany Holland.
Good evening, Bethany Holland, 305 West Milton. Um, gonna be presenting a couple of things tonight, but very briefly, I want to again thank the alternative high school students for their assistance with the Gleaners food distribution. Um, the inclement weather has re- has changed our schedule quite a bit, and as always, the students were cheerful and helpful, and despite the snow and the cold, did a really great job and distributed a lot of food. Mainly, I'm here right now to share that the creative arts, along with several other little groups in the city, are going to be doing something new. And this is the first place that we're announcing this, there is going to be a very special contest that'll hit the media here pretty soon, and we're going to have special categories with prizes for junior high school students and also the high school, and I need to figure out how to incorporate the students from this school as well. Um, we're gonna have a photo contest, and there are some pretty darn cool prizes. So, I won't, don't wanna say anymore about that because we've got, we kinda have an exclusive with somebody in the media that's gonna break this, but, uh, very excited to bring something new and exciting because winter time, there's not a lot going on. And, uh, especially that we can, uh, offer an opportunity for our students to once again shine, and I look forward to hearing them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Michael Vanderweer?
Just came right up.
I know.
Uh, Michael Vanderweer, 23321 Powell, uh, representing Hazel Park Creative Arts. A little over a year ago, oh, you kinda stole my time. A little over a year ago, we were approached by Stephanie regarding, uh, some assistance in trying to get a grant to help support the first robotics team. Unfortunately, at that point in time, it was a little late to do it last year. Back in, uh, December, we applied for a grant, and, uh, recently, we received word that we were, uh, awarded that grant for the robotics team, uh, in the amount of $5,000. Uh, we have received, we have received the check for that, so, uh, we will be, uh, putting out the, the funds for that, uh, as we go along. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That's all the slips I have, was there any others that were wishing to speak? No, that's it? Okay. All right, we will move on to special order of business, our first special order of business listed as student presentation, uh, but I know that we have some students waiting to play for us. Um, do you wanna introduce?
Sure, great. So, we had, um, I noticed on social media that we actually had, um, some fantastic students that were performing, and unfortunately, while they were performing, um, it turns out that they were not able to go forward to states, um, given a mishap with some music. But they made a choice beforehand, which is what Hazel Park is all about and Hazel Park students are all about, to go ahead and play together as a team. And so, I wanted to go ahead and acknowledge those students to come before you today and pay, play for the public and, and play for you, um, so that they're able to once again play as a group, um, because it doesn't matter if you made it to states to us, you're number one and state champion. So, we're gonna enjoy a little bit of music from all of you today.
I think that was the first place. A little putting on the ritz. I thought they were fantastic. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Ms. Lunt, is there anything you wanted to say? I see you back there.
Wait, you never introduced her.
All right, so our next special order of business is a special resolution. Should we all go up there?
Hey, Colleen, you wanna come up too?
No? Okay. Mr. Patterson? So, I'm not sure if many of you are aware, but, um, this will be Jimmy's last meeting with us in Hazel Park Schools. And so, um, he told me, I believe, not to make a fuss over him, and so we're not making a fuss. Uh, but we do wanna acknowledge very long dedication that you've had to Hazel Park Schools, and so you're gonna be moving on to bigger and better things, and so, we're not gonna make a big fuss, but we are gonna have to make a little fuss. And so, we have a resolution that we've all signed and written for you from the school board, uh, that'll go into the minutes to have memory of you forever of everything that you've done, but we couldn't, um, put down in words the amazing things that you've done to Hazel Park, Mr. Patterson. So, I'm gonna read that resolution into the record. And that is, "It is a recommendation of the administration of Hazel Park that the Board of Education approve the following proclamation regarding the distinguished service of James Patterson on February 11th, 2019. Whereas, James Patterson is a distinguished alumni of Hazel Park Schools. And, whereas James Patterson was appointed as the Board Counsel on July 17th, 2000, to guide and support the Hazel Park Board of Education. And, whereas James Patterson has affected thousands of students' lives, giving back to the Hazel Park Schools in his service to the Board of Education and the community. And, whereas James Patterson has made the difference for hundreds of employees and has garnered the respect as a mentor, friend, and confidant. And, whereas James Patterson has always been involved and supported the Hazel Park Schools by attending events and activities showing his passion, love, and care for the students, staff, and community of Hazel Park. Whereas, James Patterson is an unsung hero, an example of a true Hazel Park Viking. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Hazel Park Board of Education hereby proclaims and recognizes James Patterson for his dedication, commitment, compassion, and service for the Hazel Park Schools in aspiring and empowering all stakeholders in Hazel Park. Thank you for your service."
How often are attorneys speechless? Thank you, um, it means a lot to me. Thank you. I'm not going anywhere, I'll still be around, but I won't be sitting here every, every meeting, so. Yeah, yeah, get rid of them. This district, the people, the students, they mean everything to me, so.
Thank you again.
So, Mr. Patterson's sitting at this table a long time, he's, he's definitely been missed, um, but we wish him well as he moves on to a new endeavor, and, uh, so, uh, like he said, I know you'll be around.
Yeah, he's still.
That's a guy that cares a lot, so we appreciate that. Um, okay, the next item on our agenda is a Promise Zone update with Ms. Kayla, Mrs. Kayla Rolney Smith.
Hello, everyone. Um, just to start, so any students who haven't sent me their information for winter, oh, thank you, winter Promise Zone scholarships should do so as soon as possible so we can get those out. As a reminder, it's not written on here, but, uh, what I announced in December, students are now eligible for six years after high school graduation, still two years worth of funding, at least for now, uh, but six years after graduation, and the total scholarship, maximum scholarship eligibility is $1,500 a semester for four semesters now, instead of 1,000 a semester. So, a maximum of 6,000 instead of 4,000 over those two years, which is exciting. I've already had a student reach out to me, uh, who's five years out, who wants to use it, so I was-
It is where our school-to-work students spend half of every school day, so we're excited to kind of showcase that space to the community, highlight the program, and we'll also be honoring Sean Fain as this year's honoree. He is the UAW Chrysler employee who worked really closely with the Promise Zone and the school district to get this program up and running. He, some of you may have met him, or at least he might look familiar to you, because he is a pretty regular person now at Hazel Park Sporting Events and other things, because he really believes strongly that he should be supporting the students, not just when they're at school in the program, but he want, he, he said, "Oh, I'm at this football game," because we have some students from the program on the team. And so, we felt that he was a well-deserved honoree. So I do have paper tickets with me tonight. I also have left some with Dr. Croupy. Tickets will be available on our website in the next couple days. I apologize that they were not ready before this meeting, but they should be ready soon. You can also contact me for tickets. They're $60 each. They do come with a Hazel Park t-shirt, or Hazel Park Promise Zone t-shirt. And, I would like to note that sometimes we do have people donate tickets, if they want to purchase tickets and aren't able to attend. So if anybody's interested in attending and may not be able to afford a ticket, please let me know. We usually have extras, or if you'd like to sponsor tickets, you're more than welcome to do so. The, many of you have been to the event in the past. It's a great event. Last year was our most successful yet, thanks in large part to the Hazel Park Schools' community engagement team. So we're still very thankful to all of you who worked hard on that last year, so thank you. And then, lastly, we have a community, Oakland Community College visit scheduled for Tuesday, April 9th, and that will be for seniors who are planning to enroll or considering enrolling at OCC in the fall. That will be while the juniors are taking their SAT tests. So Musa, our post-secondary success coach, Maddie, our college advisor, and I are working with the school district, or the high school administration, to develop some different college and career-related plans for non-testing students for that week. So that's going to be one of, one of the programs that will be available. So we're excited to take students there. It's also when OCC will be hosting their annual transfer day, so we're excited that they'll be able to have their Hazel Park OCC visit, and then stay for a little while into that transfer day to talk to any four-year university college representatives who may be able to assist them in kind of preparing to be able to transfer if they choose to after they complete their time at OCC.
Any questions? Do we have any questions?
Thank you so much. I'm excited about the changes, that it's increased in the amount, and that it goes out farther. That's awesome.
We're, we have a few, we have other things we're now, like, thinking about how we can get funding to continue expanding. So, definitely, we'll, we are secure in, in what we're doing now, but want to make sure we keep be able, being able to support more students and give more funding, so. Thank you.
That's what I spoke. Thank you. All right. Do we have our student representatives here from the high school or advantage to give their report?
I don't see Rob.
Okay. All right, then we will move forward. Item E then is the Webster GSRP presentation.
Hello. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Andrea Bratton. I'm the supervisor at the Webster Early Childhood Center. And, first off, I want to really thank all the staff, and parents, and grandparents, and students who came tonight to support us in our presentation. The presentation will not only be about the GSRP, but it'll also touch on the other programs that are at Webster, because I think it's important that the community has an idea of all that's offered for early, early learning at the school. So, available early learning opportunities and services at Webster. We have Early On. We have Early Head Start and Head Start. We have Early Childhood Special Education. We have our Great Start Readiness Program, which is our GSRP free preschool, early childhood student support services, and we have the Hazel Park Schools Youth Assistance gentleman there. Our Early On is coordinated by Patrice Deckard, and unfortunately, she couldn't be here today. So, Patrice visits households with families who have concerns about the development of their children, zero, two, three, and she works with the families and gives them some strategies and tools to help them, help their children. And here's just a quick clip of some of the, whoops. Didn't play. Oh, thank you. So, that's just a little bit snippet of what Patrice does at home, you know, teaching parents and, and helping them learn how to help their children. I'm not sure why it's giving. What? So, Early Head Start, that's an OLSA-run program, and they have children birthed at three years old as well. Maria Mara is the supervisor for that program. And then the Head Start Program, which is also also ran, and that would be for three- and four-year-old children. Maria Mara also supervises that section of the school. So now on to the Great Start Readiness Program, or the free preschool as it's advertised throughout Oakland County. GSRP team, so, first off, I want to say that I've actually never had the honor of working with such dedicated and wonderful people. So, the staff has been completely welcoming, and, you know, it's my first year with the district, and I'm just so proud of the wonderful things that I see happening, and the improvements that everyone's making, and how we're moving forward. Go ahead, Natalie.
I'm not used to talking in front of adults. I just wanted to take a moment and speak about the teamwork that's happening at Webster Early Childhood. Our efforts towards teamwork leads us to create a positive interaction and environment with connections between staff, students, and families. We all come together to analyze data, plan wonderful fun events, which you'll see later, and create program goals. When we join in hands, we gain knowledge and understanding of the students' best interests. We all continue working and believing that early childhood education is a strong foundation that will lead our children to academic success. As a team, we are consistently working to create the best possible environment to foster the greatest physical, emotional, and academic well-being for our students. We continue to be completely inspired by those in our school community. Thank you.
I'm really failing. Have you seen this? You got it, Brad?
My dad's very helpful about GSRP as a staff. Very helpful, and they're very good with my kids.
I look for positive messages, I want to give you positive messages with words. I've done a good job that you guys do around here. And what I like most about the teachers is that you guys are very, very caring, you guys are very positive. You guys get a kiss, I'm going to go forward.
I am passionate about early childhood education. We've been seeing students develop intentionality, flexibility, and many social skills that will set them up for success later in life.
I teach in order for children to feel special and knowing that someone truly cares and loves them.
I teach because I would like to make a difference in children's lives.
During a training years ago, I went and was inspired by listening to them say, "A doctor always has a second chance by running more tests. A secretary always has a chance by redoing the letters. But a teacher only has one chance, because you never know what your words are going to, how your words are going to impact a child from now or in the future." So, it's really important what we do on a day-to-day basis.
And Laura is going to speak about all the wonderful community partnerships that we've had this year.
Harvard Family Research Project in 2010 found when schools and communities, organizations work together to support learning, everyone benefits. Partnerships conserve, conserve to strengthen, support, and even transform individual partners, resulting in improved program quality, more efficient use of resources, and better alignment of goals and curriculum. Hazel Park Community and the greater community has been wonderful in supporting our program this year. We have amazing high school students, Simone Berry and Jasmine LaFlore has been instrumental in supporting our program by volunteering numerous after-school hours. Community member Melissa Baldwin has dedicated an hour a week by volunteering one, in one of our classrooms. Members of the Hazel Park Firefighters and Police Departments came to our Safety Night in October, and will be coming in to read to our students soon. While en route, our mail carrier quickly stopped in and spoke to our class when they were preparing invitations to mail home to their parents for an upcoming event. Amy Beam, youth service librarian from Hazel Park Memorial Library, recently started coming bi-weekly to read to our families and do activities based on the book. In addition, in each month, Hazel Park Memorial Library pulls out books that are related to what is going on in our classroom for our families to access easily. The Catel, Catella Club located in Ferndale donated meals to some of our families in need for Thanksgiving. The families were extremely grateful for their generosity. The local Lions Club helps stock our donations room with coats, hats, and mittens during the month of December. Dentists R Us has come in and done free cleaning services and exams at our school for our students at the beginning of the school year, and once again, they'll do it at the end. Also, in an effort to assist our families in creating libraries to boost literacy in their homes, we reached out into Kiwanis International in Detroit, and they donated books to our families. Oakland University researchers have visited our classroom in an effort to research the essential literacy practices in classrooms, and provide us with feedback on teaching and learning. The Oakland County, sorry, the Oakland County Great Start Collaborative has provided monthly learning opportunities for our families through the Parent Connections Meeting. We are, we've been very appreciative of all the donations from the families. We've gotten raffle prizes provided by Airtime, Jungle Java, Imagine Theater, Luxury Lanes, and many, many more businesses. A crucial part of the GSRP is to have our community involved in our program, so we always welcome you to come volunteer, or just come visit us at Webster.
All right, good evening. I'm Denise Chandler, and I'm going to talk to you about our family engagement. So, when you think about family engagement, there's so many things that could be incorporated that encompasses family engagement. So first, you know, at the beginning of the year, you want to talk to parents about building that communication, helping parents understand that we're here for them, that we are here to help them to be able to understand what early childhood education really means. A lot of parents, they really don't know, so we want to make sure that we incorporate them. We encourage them to come to the, into the classroom, to volunteer on a regular basis, and understanding how they are able to help within the, within the school community. We also have several different things that we do within our program that will be able to help them within that aspect, as far as our open house in the beginning of the school year, which helps the parents to have that opportunity to walk around the classrooms, to get to understand what we do, and all of the different teachers, and meet everyone in that beginning of the open house, our parent orientation, which helps them to understand what our expectations are, and what we expect them to, how we expect them to volunteer, and how we expect them to be incorporated within our program. We do our home visits, which is super important, because at the beginning of the year, when you're dealing with home visits, that gives us a chance to meet the child outside of their school environment, and to understand who they are individually, and get to understand who their parents are, understand what their home environments are, what their religious aspects are. So we understand that we are bridging a gap between their home environment and our school environment. We have monthly parent advisory meetings there at our school, recruitment, open houses, where we invite parents to come in to see what we do, so that we are able to get new students and new preschool students. We have an amazing app called Seesaw, which is sort of like what some of the elementary teachers have, which is Remind. So Seesaw allows the parents to be able to download an app onto their phone, which is super amazing, so that they're able to kind of see what their child is doing regularly in school. So we are able to give them reminders and notes, let them know the upcoming events that we're having, but they're also able to see pictures of what their children are doing and what they're learning in the classroom, which, and videos, so that they're able to see some of the things that their children are doing, which has been very helpful with one of our parents, because they have a, the child has an attachment issue with mom, and so whenever mom has, whenever the child is just difficult to leave mom during the day, and mom is always very upset, that child is so upset when she's leaving, we can send a picture, literally, at that moment, and that mom is able to get that picture and understand that all is well, and he's having an amazing rest of the day. We've had several different events, Safety Night, Winter Blast, we have a reading, a library event that come, that they come to the school, I think bi-weekly. And we've had recently, an animal fashion show, where one of the classrooms, they decided to, their children had decided they wanted to have an animal fashion show, and not only did they just have a fashion show where the parents just dropped off something, no. These children constructed these pieces, that they, they were designers, okay? So they were able to say, "I want to be a fish," and they worked on that, that costume, or lions, or whatever have you, that they decided that they wanted to be. The parents came in to see this fashion show, and you have to see this smiles on these children's faces, to be able to show you that, take the ownership of what they've done, their own designs, and the parents were just extremely supportive. I saw that our library filled with just an enormous amount of parents, which was super awesome. We have tomorrow, hopefully, our first zoo field trip in the classroom. We were given a grant from the Detroit Zoo, but they said if school is closed, that they will reschedule the trip, so that's pretty awesome. And it was totally free of charge to the school.
to help them to be able to understand what early childhood education really means. A lot of parents, they really don't know, so we want to make sure that we incorporate them. We encourage them to come to, into the classroom, to volunteer on a regular basis, and understanding how they are able to help within the, within the school community. We also have several different things that we do within our program that would be able to help them within that aspect as far as our open house in the beginning of the school year, which helps the parents to have that opportunity to walk around the classrooms, to get to understand what we do and all of the different teachers, and meet everyone at that beginning of the open house, our parent orientation, which helps them to understand what our expectations are and what we expect them to, how we expect them to volunteer, and how we expect them to be incorporated within our program. We do our home visits, which is super important because at the beginning of the year, when you're dealing with home visits, that gives us a chance to meet the child outside of their school environment and to understand who they are individually, and get to understand who their parents are, understand what their home environments are, what their religious aspects are. So we understand that we are bridging a gap between their home environment and our school environment. We have monthly parent advisory meetings there at our school, recruitment, open houses, where we invite parents to come in to see what we do so that we are able to get new students and new preschool students. We have an amazing app called Seesaw, which is sort of like what some of the elementary teachers have, which is Remind. So Seesaw allows the parents to be able to download an app onto their phone, which is super amazing, so that they're able to kind of see what their child is doing regularly in school. So we are able to give them reminders and notes, let them know the upcoming events that we're having, but they're also able to see pictures of what their children are doing and what they're learning in the classroom, and videos, so that they're able to see some of the things that their children are doing, which has been very helpful with one of our parents because they have a, the child has an attachment issue with mom, and so whenever mom has, whenever the child is, it's difficult to leave mom during the day, and mom is always very upset, that child is so upset when she's leaving, we can send a picture, literally, at that moment, and that mom is able to get that picture and understand that all is well, and he's having an amazing rest of the day. We've had several different events, Safety Night, Winter Blast, we have a reading, a library event that comes, that they come to the school, I think bi-weekly, and we've had recently an animal fashion show, where one of the classrooms, they decided to, their children had decided they wanted to have an animal fashion show, and not only did they just have a fashion show where the parents just dropped off something, no, these children constructed these pieces, that they, they were designers, okay? So they were able to say, "I wanna be a fish," and they worked on that, that costume, or lions, or whatever have you, that they decided that they wanted to be. The parents came in to see this fashion show, and you have to see this smiles on these children's faces to be able to show you that, take the ownership of what they've done, their own designs, and the parents were just extremely supportive. I saw that our library filled with just an enormous amount of parents, which was super awesome. We have tomorrow, hopefully, our first zoo field trip in the classroom. We were given a grant from the Detroit Zoo, but they said if school is closed, that they will reschedule the trip, so that's pretty awesome. And it was totally free of charge to the school. Parents, they even said that we were only able to bring two parents, but luckily, they've opened it up to ten parents to come, so we're super excited about that as well. So there's so many things that we do at Webster that are allowing our parents to be able to be engaged and have that engagement in our program. Thank you.
So that was just a glimpse at one of our more popular events that we had this year, and we're looking forward to our game night coming up at the end of the month.
Hi, so I have the part to talk about our curriculum. We follow the HighScope curriculum, which is a research-based kindergarten readiness curriculum. Children are guided by teachers through intentionally planned activities, allowing them hands-on experiences to discover answers for themselves. Active learning is how our children learn, not just play. They learn by doing it and feeling it all. And key developmental indicators is what our children are learning, which is the curriculum piece of HighScope. So we've put together pictures and videos of our children's learning experiences for you to enjoy.
I'm wondering where we're gonna have this party. You want the party here at the toy area? Kiwanis wants the party at the house area. You're okay with the toy area? So looks like you guys solved your problem. So you've all decided that you want to have the party in the toy area today.
Okay, so as you can see, our children are not only playing, but they're learning, and the teachers do a really, really impressive job of deepening that learning through discussions, not only during work time, small group, large group, but also outside time, gym time, and when they're eating, so. So GSRP, using data to inform learning and program improvement. So I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with this, so we thought we would share that we also use quite a bit of data in our GSRP program. The PQA, the ECS from Oakland Schools comes and evaluates our classrooms, and the core advantage would be how we assess our children. So, program goals for Period Two. So right, currently, we are in Period Two. November 18th through March 10th would be Period Two. And our goals for Period Two were based on our Period One PQA data. So I think that's important because it's an outside person coming in from Oakland Schools to evaluate the program and to let us know where our strengths are and where areas of development are. Increased Core Language Literacy and Communication Score to an average level of 3.5. As you can see, in Period One, our children came in around the twos, low threes. Preschool average being three to five. And as you can see, we have done well at meeting our goal for Period Two, and this is with about 50% of our data in at this point. So I'm really looking forward to seeing where the numbers are at the end of Period Two. A second goal was to increase family participation to 50% of families at family events and 10% at parent meetings. I apologize, I do not have a fancy graph or chart for you, if I had one more night. But I believe that we have reached that goal. It's been amazing, the parent support and family support, not only parents, grandparents joining us. And then, increase the amount of diversity artifacts in each classroom to a minimum of 10 per classroom. So this is a PQA requirement, and I think that we have, I don't wanna say educate ourselves, but we have broadened our view on what those diversity artifacts may be, maybe anything from glasses to a dress. We have a little girl whose father's from Africa, dress from Africa. So diversity means a lot of things, not just cultural diversity. So we've really branched out, you know, it could be the alphabet book that's in Miss Mantha's class that's based on Hazel Park, you know? So anyways, we have definitely increased, we're still working towards that 10 for all the classrooms, but we have until March 10th, so we'll keep moving forward with that. Now, when we collect the core data, so after, when we assess our children, we assess them through our anecdotal notes, through, as you can see here, the teacher's taking notes on an event that happened in a classroom, and then she scores it on the right side. We also assess whether there are pieces of work, and again, you can see here, this is another example, so we use a lot of photographs for our assessment and data collection. And we also use video. And this is also available to the parents to access. I am very proud to tell you that our core student data, Period One, 100% complete, and Period Two, we're still waiting on that other 50% to get in, but we have definitely shown growth, and that's what we're looking for, we're looking for growth in all of the areas. So, to go off of that, after school, where do the kids go? Some of our kids attend our latchkey program, and that is ran by Lori Bieber. Next, we'll touch on student support services, which are available also at Webster.
Hi, my name is Sarah Gregory, and I'm a speech language pathologist over at Webster. I work with all the programs over here, so the Head Start, the Early Childhood Special Education Classroom, as well as GSRP. And so I actually evaluate all preschool speech language skills, so once they get a referral, whether it's a parent request or a teacher referral, I evaluate those skills. And after that, if they become eligible, then I help improve those overall communication skills, whether it's play skills, articulation skills, receptive language, so following directions, or answering questions, as well as sentence structure vocabulary, so really helping children communicate their needs and wants in the classroom.
Hey, I'm Lori Codan, occupational therapist here at Webster, and I work with children a very young age, working on promoting more efficient grass from a foam fist or a mouthed finger to more efficient tripod grass for coloring and pre-writing shapes, and also work on visual motor casts such as learning how to safely use scissors and button and any pages in her.
Melissa's our physical therapist.
Hi, my name is Becca Kirin-Bely. I'm a school psychologist in the Hazel Park District. My primary role, working with kids from the Webster Early Childhood Center, is evaluating when we suspect that they might need special education services and supports. So generally, that entails observing them in the classroom, interviewing teachers and parents, and then I personally administer cognitive assessments, adaptive assessments, and academic assessment in order to see if they meet criteria for those services, and then as a team, we develop an individualized education plan for that student.
We also have the Early Childhood Special Education Program, and that is taught by Jennifer Jasalds. And then we have our youth assistants, who, I just wanna say something, Jeff has been an amazing asset to our, I think, the district, and then especially to our school community. Oftentimes, teachers need someone just to say, "Hey, I'm not, you know, what can I do to help this family?" And he's always there to help us, so that's been an amazing bonus.
My name is Jeff Roth, and I'm with Hazel Park Youth Assistance. My role within the community is to assist children when they're having problems at home and at school. I also provide support for kids that are having struggles emotionally. I can also help parents that are looking for resources to help their kids out. I also provide activities and programs for kids so they can benefit more in the future. I've worked with parents and kids in the Webster Early Childhood Center, specifically with grief and loss of a loved one, with struggles emotionally, and with resources in the community.
So we also wanna announce that we have some exciting things coming to our Webster Early Childhood Center. We have the Learning Garden, which is sponsored by Big Greens, we're very excited for that opportunity. And then we are in the works of discussing how to give a little Friday family time. So this would be a time when the family can come while we're there and utilize especially the library literacy space and the recycled maker space. So, that concludes our presentation. Again, if you guys could give a warm clap for these wonderful ladies. And we just wanna say thank you to the board, Dr. Croupy, and Stephanie, and everyone who has supported our program, and we look forward to what the future brings. Thank you so much for that information, that was great. All the different programs, it's nice to hear you explain it and go through it. Can you guys just raise your hand for the ones that are here from Webster, so we all know exactly who's? All right, thank you. All right. With that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. I know we pulled two items out, so I think we're gonna need different motions for those two items. So, item-
I think you can approve the consent agenda and then go to the other ones.
Approve the consent, then go to the other ones. Okay, so this will be on everything but the-
Two items here.
Yeah.
I made a motion, we approve the remaining consent agenda items.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Mrs. Semple?
Yes.
Yes. All right, then I need a motion then to just, to, for the items that- To approve-
For discussion.
For discussion, yeah.
I make a motion.
Support.
All right, and the items were under two, the committee-
A2.
A2?
A and B.
And E?
And B, B2. So, two, A and B, and then I and E.
You might wanna discuss them each individually, each area.
Chuck, can you amend your motion to just-
Do you wanna group them all together?
Do you wanna discuss them separately, or do you wanna?
Well, we can group them all together, we just have a few comments on all three of them, that's-
So it was A, A2?
And B.
B?
Yeah. A, two A and B, and then you were nine.
Okay, A1 and 2, and E?
E.
Sorry. Okay, so we-
Did you touch that, Passon?
I know, it's just fine.
All right, so we have a motion, did we already get support?
Yeah, Mrs. Semple.
Okay, discussion.
Main reason I came up with those was because, number one, on the Finance Committee, I looked at it, and I noticed the quick breakdown on the audit on the adult end. I would like to have a further breakdown, because that's over a three-year, I wanna see like, the whole where, as the staff, where, where we overpaid basically, because looking at it, it showed we were in the red for the fourth, for three years, according to the layout on that. So I wanted to see which years did we lose more, and what we had in those categories as far as staffing-wise, is it, you know, billing-wise? Because in looking at it and seeing how much we were getting from the federal government and everything, and how much we were spending, I'd like to see a better breakdown on those.
Okay, so, Dr. Croupy?
It's up to the entire board, if that's what the board-
The board?
Which is the business office to do a, a complete, deeper dive.
For me, I'd prefer it, but if the rest of the board wants to see it, that's fine, too.
No, I think if that's what you want, then as a board, we should support it.
So, we're basically gonna take the results that we're providing at Finance Committee meeting, and you're talking about breaking it down further so you can understand where the loss-
Correct.
How the expenditures land.
How over the three years you're showing the loss.
Do you wanna a presentation to the board on that?
No, I don't need a presentation, I just wanna see the figures on it.
You just wanna report a, a report with more detail?
Yeah, we don't need a presentation to the board on that.
Okay. All right, so that's discussion, and something we can follow up on?
Yes.
All right. What was the, let's go on to the next item then?
Next one was the buildings and grounds. Being that as a chairperson, I had to make a recommendation that we missed out putting Ms. Hinton on the, as a present member on it. According to that, it only showed me and Christie on it with the other members present, so I wanted to make sure that's on the minutes showing that she was present and she is a member of the buildings and ground.
All right. So that's amendment to the minutes?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Hempel. I was there.
We're glad you were there. We don't want to leave out that.
I know you were present.
I did, okay, all right, and then that's-
And then, number E, I don't understand how the overnight conference, I understand we'll pay for it, that's no problem there, but normally it comes under the regular new business, instead of being in the consent agenda, being that we see that the soccer team wants an overnight also. So that was my biggest question and issue on that one, is because of the fact that that should have been present to the new business instead of the consent agenda.
Okay.
We can do it however the board would like. I think we've done it both ways for overnight for staff. We don't do a ton for administrators overnight, but it's however you wish as a board. If you wish to pull it and put it on new business, we certainly can.
Okay.
That would be the better way than just in the consent agenda. And that's all I have.
Okay, so, Mrs. Atkins, do we need to make a motion to approve the committee meetings with Mr. Hempel's recommendations?
Yes. Do we need to amend?
You do need to vote on it.
Okay.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the committee meeting minutes for finance and building grounds with the discussion items included as presented.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the overnight conference for Mr. Jordanis as presented.
And Mr. Miller?
And Mr. Miller, sorry.
Support. All right, any discussion on, any discussion on that?
I was looking at his name, too.
This was a request to attend the MSBO, oh, I was going to have it right, conference. Okay, business official conference. All right, any other discussion on that?
No.
All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right, now we can move on to unfinished business. So we have one item, which was the amendment to the superintendent's contract. Need a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the amendment to the superintendent's contract as presented.
One second.
All right, discussion?
Yes, I will not be supporting this. I talked to Dr. Croupy on Friday, and I kind of explained why. And it's not because I don't want her here as a superintendent. I think we have room to improve. I have, my issues with it is the morale within our schools and the behavior. I think that, I told her I would like to see, this is my opinion, not the board's, I would like to see her reach out to the teachers, give the opportunity. If they don't grasp it and take it, then shame on them, but I want to see the effort made to say, you know, I can't say she's not trying, because I'm sure she is in the public, she's very visible, she's highly effective when it comes to, probably more so than any of our superintendents have ever been. But when it comes to internal, I think we have a lot of room for improvement, and that would be my reasoning why I can't support it.
Any other discussion?
I'm also not supporting, Mrs. Atkins was aware by telephone poll that I'm not supporting the extension. It says an addendum, it's an extension for an extra year. We've had, heard many people at the podium. I have asked this board for executive sessions. I have written three or four letters to them saying we have a problem here. Nothing ever results from that. We have two years of teacher surveys that, in my 30 years in this district, I have never read or seen anything like that before, which I did say that at a meeting previous to this one. Dr. Croupy, I thought I hired a traditional school superintendent, not a reformed school superintendent. There's always room for improvement. The highway never ends when it comes to education. But the person that she's following, Dr. Chandler, believes public schools are fundamentally flawed. I do not. I've been a public school supporter. Yes, they need improvement, yes, they need money. Our schools worked very hard to turn around and became reward schools, our high school and our junior high, only for that to be undone. Also, she applied for jobs somewhere else, and I think we've done two amendments for her, and showing our commitment. And I don't think her heart is here by going somewhere else. And I don't, I don't think it's the time for an extension for our children. So I'm also, no.
Any other discussion?
I would like just to say that I think that Dr. Croupy is doing a great job. I think that as a board, we need to give her better direction with some of the goals and setting our own board goals, so we, so she and her administrative staff can kind of guide that change. I think that we've asked her to come in here and do a lot of big changes, and this district has been on a 10 to 15-year decline prior, five years ago, and when she came in, I think that we have a lot to still do, and it's a, I wish it could be done overnight, I wish it could wave a magic wand, and I think that the team of people that she's brought in here have done an excellent job. And I think we have a good team of staff and teachers who are committed to our students, and we can just continue to go forward. Are there things that we can improve on? Absolutely. But I choose, I choose Hazel Park, I choose our students, and I choose as they commit it, but the team we have and moving forward.
Anyone else want to add anything? Okay, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
No.
Mr. Hempel?
No.
Mrs. Hempel?
No.
Schla?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right, we are going to move on to new business. So we're going to go to personnel recommendations.
I make a motion we re-approve the ASME recommendations as written.
I support.
Any discussion? No, roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Next group, HPA SA.
I make a motion that we approve the HPEA recommendations as written, sorry. Support.
All right, so that's the, HPA is teacher?
Teachers.
Okay.
Oh, that's a teacher.
Yep, roll call. We still have one more.
Schla?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
The HPA SA, the administration, can I get a motion on that one?
No, it's a paraprofessional, so the next one.
I think we, we have one more.
We have, we have one more.
Above the HPEA.
On the spreadsheet.
Oh, okay, I make a recommendation that we approve the HPA SA organizational group as recommended. Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
No.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Now the HPPA, the paraprofessional?
I make a motion that we approve the HPPA recommendations as written. Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Abstained.
Mr. Hempel, Mrs. Hempel?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
No?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right, IUOE, I need a motion for that, for secretary?
I make a motion we approve the IUOE group as recommended.
Support.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Next, I need a motion for unaffiliated employees.
I make a motion for the unaffiliated employees.
Support.
Any discussion?
It was, thank you, Mrs. Hamper.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right, that gets us through our personnel recommendations. We can go to item B, approval of kitchen items. Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the requested kitchen items. Support.
All right, discussion.
This evening, we're just asking for approval to purchase a number of items within the food service fund, going into a number of kitchens across the district for a total of $44,000. The money is already set aside in the budget, which will leave about $30,000 for any miscellaneous things that come up between now and the end of the year. And again, this was through conjunction with Charp Wells and our food service director, Samantha, coming to us with these requests for equipment that is still functioning but is very old in terms of waiting for it to finally break, as opposed to, you know, waiting for it to break, we replace it proactively versus, you know, being reactive in this district as we want it to pass. Any other questions or concerns?
The money was coming from the food service.
It's all food service fund. It's, again, it's nothing to do with the general fund. It's, again, it's the money that we generated basically last year within the food service fund. We're just looking to spend that down so that we don't go into any issues in the next couple of years if we do generate, say, I think last year we generated about $200,000. The state requires us to ensure that we don't have a fund equity in that fund in excess of one-third of your expenditures. So from our standpoint, we're just trying to make sure that we're being proactive in that spent out, so we don't get a letter from the state saying you need to spend some money.
Well, I always like to see that, you know, the improvement on the food areas, so I'm glad to see that, especially when it says for the junior high, need to improve line speed, you know, I'm sure all the kids can appreciate getting their lunch faster and having equipment and keeping the food warm, so. Anybody have any questions or comments on this?
Mr. Jordanis, I see in here that there'll be a detailed assessment. Would that be shared with the building and grounds committee?
We're actually building that as we speak. So again, what we're looking at is, these are just the minor items. When you go into some of the kitchens, we may have to go and look at, you know, maybe doing some renovations. And in terms of the junior high, we are actually looking at the way we're setting up the lines within the cafeteria itself, so we may be coming back with a future recommendation where we're going to do some modifications to improve efficiencies, to get the kids to their lunches, to their seats, and out as quick as possible.
All right, great, thank you. And if there's another discussion, we can go ahead with a roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right, next item, asbestos inspection slash designated person. So I get a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the asbestos inspection slash designated person, whatever Jason wants to talk about.
She just covered it right there.
I'll support that. All right, so discussion.
So from, again, what I've encountered in the last three months, is just looking at some of the stuff that we have and haven't done, asbestos inspections, some project management plans, where, again, we've looked at what we have in place right now, we're deficient in a couple of our buildings. So part of what Nova Environmental is going to do for us is come in and build those management plans for us, in terms of letting us know, identifying where asbestos is in the buildings, so that when we do have any projects in the future, we know how to remediate it accordingly. They're also going to do some training for asbestos awareness for our custodial staff and for myself. And then we'll probably do some, you know, quality, air quality testing and stuff like that. There isn't a concern, it's just something that needs to be done on an annual basis. We have to do some inspections and re-inspections. So this is going to get us into compliance with the AHIRA laws of 1984. And again, what we're also doing, what I'm also asking is, is for myself to be the asbestos designated person, to oversee the, you know, the testing and the management plans and whatnot.
How does that make you qualified, though?
I'm going to take some training. Again, this is all new to me as well, so as I'm going through this, this is the first time I've dealt with it. But again, for the, for the most part, you know, I think our staff currently has a very good idea of where the asbestos is in our buildings. We know enough not to disturb it. And again, from our standpoint, Nova Environmental's been in the district for a number of years, and they've worked very well with our staff. So for me, it's going to be a learning experience and just helping manage our relationship with Nova and our custodial staff.
I see on here you've got general and sinking fund as being part of it.
Again, for the most part, I think a lot of this is going to be within the sinking fund in terms of the management plans and whatnot. There may be some areas where it's going to fall back into the, into the general fund. I don't think it's going to be significant, though.
If it's an annual thing, is the fees an upfront fee, or can we do part of it and then do part of it another time, so that it's all coming out of the funds that-
This, this, what they're projecting right now to be $18,105 is everything that we need to do based on our preliminary assessment of what needs to be done in terms of management plans, testing, training. And then what I'm hoping for in the next six months to a year is that, again, we won't have to do a lot of the management plans again, because once you do it, it's set in stone. All we have to do is, as we go in and remediate some of the asbestos, we'll update our management plans to say that this has been removed and go forward. It's like a living document that stays with the district forever. And then, again, some of the re-inspections and six-month surveillances, I'm hoping that we'll be able to bring back into the district with Greg and myself doing those, as opposed to having an outside company do it. So I think in the future, what we're looking at is probably some air quality testing going forward. But again, this initial $18,000 is to get us back into compliance.
So when you get this report, though, we're going to have it so it's transparent, so that everyone can see it, I would hope?
Yeah, there's, there's reports that we have to list on our transparency site or our website on asbestos. So we'll have that taken care of as well.
All right. Anybody have any other questions? All right, roll call.
Schla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
So... Yeah, so I didn't get a chance to talk to you members before the meeting tonight, but I guess since it's an open spot, there are seven people running for Region Eight. I know that at least, what, seven of them sent us emails? So, hopefully you were able to review their profiles. It's in the attachment here. But I guess the way we would proceed is for someone to make a motion to vote for one of the eight, seven people running for Region Eight. So...
How many were you voting for? One?
One.
I read the one that we got just recently.
Is there a Williams? Because I lost my...
There's Regina Williams.
She was the only one that I received in the mail, and I loved it because I got a gazillion emails, and it's like, she has great experience, too. But it's like, she took the time to do all those mailings.
Yeah, she comes out of Harper Woods.
I liked her and I liked Berke. Berke McQuiston, those are the two I had, so I'm okay with either one.
The letter she sent was very unprofessional.
William?
In the mail?
Yes.
Did anybody else get it?
I did not. I don't know.
I don't think so.
I'll have to reread it. I thought it was pretty good.
I know, I got emails from almost everyone, and I don't know.
I don't know.
But we do need to make a decision and get this to them by March sixth, I think.
We need to make a decision tonight.
Make a decision tonight.
Yes. If you want to vote?
Unless we add it to our special meeting or workshop on the twenty-fifth. A few weeks. Right, do we have a workshop this month? We try not to do votes there. I'm just trying to think of how to get it done.
I think we do.
Yeah, the twenty-fifth, we do have one. That's if the board wanted it.
Yeah, I don't want to put a vote on there if you're uncomfortable with it, so.
We gotta work, uh, yeah.
I think we should wait till the workshop.
Workshop.
Okay.
I like this better.
Take away, do we do a motion or something, or we didn't do anything?
Table it.
Table it. We need to amend it to table it. Who did the motion? Oh, we didn't do a motion. We need a motion to table it.
I make a motion that we table the MASB Board of Director discussion to our workshop on February twenty-fifth.
Support. Can you forward this to a regular email? Because finding it back in our regular...
You're talking about the attachment?
Yeah, the attachment where it has everybody. Because trying to go through, back through all my emails to find the individuals, this is a lot better. I can re-read around them all.
Okay. All right.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you have that, Laura? Do you have that, or do you want me to forward it?
If you, it's in the packet, so I assume we could forward it. If you want to forward it, that'd be great. I think we received several supporting things from MASB, but sometimes there's a lot to sort through. So, let's just make sure we file with the board and everybody do their due diligence on who they'd like to support. I apologize for not getting out to you sooner tonight, or today. I've been out of town, so we'll do that the twenty-fifth. Okay, roll call.
Schloss?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Nope?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item E, approval for high school summer school. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the summer school.
Support. All right, discussion. I see Dr. Bassell here.
So, good evening. I am here to ask for your approval for the high school summer school programming, which will follow the same format that it has for the past few years. We're asking for it to run the six weeks. It'll run from June twenty-fourth through August first of twenty-nineteen. Free breakfast, free lunch. The program will consist of the credit recovery courses and a face-to-face instruction course. We haven't decided upon which content area yet, but we usually decide that based on the requirement, whether it's a math or a science. But we are looking to have one face-to-face course. The same amount of teachers, which is seven, so there'll be online and face-to-face instruction. The cost would be the same as it was last year, which is forty dollars per course. Again, the same weeks, the same amount of hours per day, and we're looking to be around in the same figure as we were last year, which is about forty thousand dollars, which would be taken from the thirty-one A at-risk funds, which, again, is the same format that we've been using for the past few years. So, I'm just here tonight to look for your support in approving the high school summer school program.
Any questions? Have any questions, comments? I'm glad we're doing this again.
Definitely important.
It is important to have this offering. All right, roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Nope?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F, athletic trainer contract. I assume we need a motion to approve this?
Make a motion to a discussion.
Support.
Okay, and who is speaking to this?
I will speak to it. So, we originally, when we came four years ago, had an athletic trainer through a company, and then that individual came to work for us, so we hired them directly. And then, when that person left and went to another school district, we went back with the company again. It's a significant cost savings to do it with a company than it is to hire your own person directly.
Is this the first year or second year?
No, this would be our second year with Athletico. But we had a different company four years ago, then we had our own person, and then this year we went back with the company. So, this was extending the contract.
I was kind of looking at the contract here, and it just kind of says what they cover, but I know that most of the sports they would be attending or being at, right? The person, the trainer, would be at most of the sporting events?
No, there's only certain events by MHSA that they have to attend, and Dave could speak better to those events. And so, we actually have them tend a few more, but there's only specific events by MHSA that they have to attend. And then he has them here for certain hours after school. They're not required to be at every single, nor could they every single event.
Okay, because my issue was, is that a few times we had kids in the pool area get cut, and the one time that I guess he was supposed to be on deck, we had to send someone to find him because someone did get cut. And it's just concerning that if they're supposed to be at that event, then, you know, he was in the building, we had to find him, but if he's, or whomever, they should be at that event.
So, that's a great conversation to have with Dave. I'm not familiar with that situation or a couple of times people getting hurt. But this makes a contract with the company, not necessarily with the person. So, if we're unhappy with that person, I think those are things to share with Dave so that we can address that.
I would only suggest one change. The term allows for the company to terminate upon thirty days' notice without any cause, but it doesn't make an equal provision for the school to terminate upon thirty days' notice without cause. And it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander, so.
Jimmy, you sure you don't want to stay?
Which one's that on you, Jimmy?
Term the agreement.
All right, so if Mr. Patterson is requesting that amendment, do we need to amend our motion?
I think the motion was for discussion.
Okay, the motion was for discussion. Okay.
So...
So, is there any other discussion? Do we have a motion to vote on this?
I make the motion that we approve the contract based on the adjustments that our board attorney advised us to do.
I support that.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Nope?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, item G, youth assistance members. We need a motion to approve the proposed youth assistance.
I make a motion for discussion.
Support. Discussion?
My question is, is why is this on the agenda? Because the majority of the time, youth assistants just sends a letter over, and we just basically receive and file it, and now we're making motions to approve it. Is that what I'm hearing?
It looks like, based on what I'm reading, Mr. Hempel, in the bylaws, is that we have to approve, and so does the city council, approve these members based on the youth assistance bylaws that are in the packet. That's what my understanding was, why this was brought to us tonight. Dr. Coopie, am I mistaken?
Yeah, we're supposed to, I think, I don't believe that I've had approval since I've been here, anything since.
Well, that's what I mean. I thought it was just a receiving file.
I don't think I've received any since I've been here.
I don't think you've had any.
But I, we've...
So, when I was placed on youth assistance years ago, the city council approved me. Actually, both sides need to approve it.
Oh, well, then they never approved me.
And we have a resident.
Because you're not on, you're not on youth assistance, you're the board representative.
I guess to go back with what Rachel just said, though, these are youth assistance bylaws, they're not ours, so...
Okay, the way the letter reads that I've sent here for many, many, many years, it just says, if hearing nothing from the board, then they're accepted, and the names go on to the county court, to the family court. So, it's never been on an agenda? Because I think they just, it says if we don't hear anything, then...
Then we agree.
So, I mean, this is okay.
Hearing none.
It's fine this way, it's just never been on an agenda. I voted this way.
Right, this is just being transparent in the members that are going on.
No, I'm okay with it, but I think their bylaws don't pertain to us.
Actually, I think the bylaws...
No, it's just saying how to do this.
Or hit this.
The board hasn't approved the people.
Oh, so those bylaws are for us, they're not the youth assistance?
No, they're youth assistance bylaws.
But they're asking that we...
Directing youth assistance to have you approve our people.
And if you don't approve or disagree with it, they automatically get that.
Is it also the same for the city, that you send the same?
Yeah, same, exact same letter.
Yeah. And if I learned something, too, by reading the bylaws, I was like, oh, I didn't know. But I don't think that we have an issue with this. It was just be transparent, that these are the proposed members.
It's a formality.
Yes. Formality.
Yep.
All right, so this was a motion for discussion. Does somebody want a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the youth assistance members and their bylaws.
Support. All right, any other discussion? Additional discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Nope?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, item G, approval for open enrollment.
Do a fire panel.
Oops.
I'm on H.
Why are they?
I'm on H.
I'm on H.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Approval of open enrollment.
Make a motion that we continue open enrollment for the nineteen-twenty school year.
Support. Discussion?
I will be voting no on this also. I've done it in the past. I believe that Hazel Park should take care of Hazel Park residents. Not that I'm opposed to other people wanting to come to get an education with us, but I guess I'm old school. I bought in Hazel Park to use Hazel Park schools, and I wish other people would do it as well.
But I went to a meeting, and the state told us if we didn't open our borders, they would discontinue our money.
Well, it's not a law, it's not written, it's not in our deficit, so we have an option, so it is what it is.
I would ask that you specify whether it's going to be, you say, schools of choice. There's two different types. There's within the county and then adjoining counties. That would be 105C. So, I'd ask that you specify, 105 is within the county, 105C is within the county and adjoining counties. So, I'd ask that your motion be a little more specific. I think I understand what the motion is, but you need to pass it whether you're going to be a 105 or 105C. And yes, I don't know that there's anything at this moment requiring us, but the Michigan Department of Education, while we're under the deficit elimination plan, did require that we continue the 105C, which was in place before, just before this.
The resolution states both 105 and 105C.
The resolution does, but the motion that was made did not.
But is it fair, since we extended it for twelve years or a duration?
We didn't have 105C for twelve years. We've only been 105C for...
Oh, no.
No, the deficit is that long. To say that since we're in a deficit, I don't agree. I mean, I appreciate your suggesting it, but...
I don't have a position.
We renew it every year, right?
Yeah.
That's unfortunate.
How many 105C kids do we have out of Oakland County?
I don't have those numbers for you right now.
I make a motion to continue. I'll amend my motion to continue for 105 and 105C for the nineteen-twenty school year.
Support.
I believe in our screening process and the way our administration handles that.
I think, again, a comment that I would make is, if that's a decision that the board wanted to go down in the future, you need to have an extensive study about the impact of that and then what your choices would be with your community about the changes that that would occur.
Do the math.
Yeah, and so I think that's really important for you, just to think about in doing it. You know, your choice is a board to make that decision. But you need to spend some time studying it, thinking about facility usage, and then what your future plan would be. So, if that's the wish of the board, that's something that the board as a whole would need to think about.
Well, that would be basically twelve years down the road because you got to wait till the deficit is eliminated before you even can do it.
Can we do that in the coming year? This extensive study thing?
You can put together a working group.
I hear a lot of people, they don't like it. I'm not strongly in favor of it, but my name's on this paper that's going to the state. But I'd like more details. I want how many kids are here, etc.
I think I would ask that we wait until the spring and study it for the spring and the summer and into the fall, given
Just so we're ready next year.
Given the fact that we're trying to put our budget and items together. But if we want to spend some time and say, what are the impacts, what are the thoughts, what's happening around us? What are your building utilizations look like, and what would happen if you didn't, and what would that mean? And then what do you want to do, and maybe hear your community stakeholders, what they want to do as well. You know, those are all decisions to think about, and what would be the future impacts on your budget, and then what you'd have to do to survive under that.
Not just budget programs.
Yeah.
We have enough kids to support certain things, like entire sporting teams and things like that without our 105C kids.
It's all a choice.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, I, I think a study is a great idea to explore the numbers a little bit more. I think that school of choices seems here to stay, and I feel like, you know, that to remain a viable district, that's part of it right now. But I'm open to exploring to see, you know, what kind of trade-offs would be if we ever changed our direction.
Well, but you also got to look at board policy states that even if you vote no on any and it approved by the board, you have to still support it. So, whether if you vote no on it, and I will be, too, because I've done that for the last eighteen years that I've been on the board. So, it's like, whether or not we say no doesn't mean we're not supporting it. It just means that it's out there that we're not happy with it. And I've been, some board members weren't happy with me, but hey, that's life. But hey, all right, we're going.
Okay, so if I vote no...
If you vote no, it's still a majority. It'll show that it, it'll show that we voted no.
Hey, you want to be the vice president, that's what you get.
There are minutes out there where the hempels name...
That's all right. It's my autograph that goes on inside.
People will hear this part. They'll know I wanted to vote no.
Right, you wanted to vote no, but you...
Right. Okay, roll call.
Nope?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
No.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
No.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, let's move on to item I, approval for fire panel replacement.
Make a motion that we approve the replacement of the fire control panel at the junior high in the cost of five thousand two hundred and seventy dollars with a monthly monitoring cost of a hundred and three dollars as presented.
Support.
Can I just take all your thunder?
All right, discussion, Mr. Jordan.
So, again, after the pipe burst prior Friday, it was discovered that the panel was not sending the signals outside of the building. So, from our standpoint, we want to replace the panel so that, again, the district personnel will receive the alarms and the emergency services will have received the alarm.
Real quick, thank you to that resident that called the fire department, yeah, let us know something was happening there.
There's some good and some bad to that. I mean, we could have maybe got a new auditorium as opposed to just a new gym floor and renovated offices, so.
I mean, I will say my kid was happy to miss one more day of school.
Any comments or questions on this?
We could have replaced the front door. We could have took the exit door.
All right, roll call.
Nope?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, item J, approval for postage machine. Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the postage machine.
I support the postage machine.
Discussion.
This is just a replacement of the existing postage machine. Its lease is out, and it's, I think it's five years old, so it's due for replacement. It is a little bit more expensive per month than the previous machine, but again, we're getting better technology. You know, it automatically feeds the envelopes through as opposed to putting it through one by one. So, again, again, from our standpoint, it's a slight increase over what our annual cost is. And it's something that we need to have within the district, so.
And it was brought before the finance committee, and he told us exactly like what they were doing with the old one, so I think they need a new one.
That is true.
Are we going to have two machines or just one?
No, what happened is this machine doesn't really belong, the current machine is just on lease and it'll go back to the company.
Any other comments? All right, roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Pinton?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Is she calling me?
Nope?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, item K, first reading for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty staffing.
So, every year around this time, we start talking about staffing. And this year, we're going to kind of look at this month and next month, we'll bring it to you for formal approval. As you know, staffing is always very difficult, and the take that we have is that we look at our students, we look at students coming in, and as students are coming in, then we fill classrooms. And so even though next month, we might ask you to approve and increase, let's say, at Webb in second grade for three classrooms, if we only have enough students to register for two, we wait for that number to go over to enough for three. And so remember that as we look through here. So as we're doing staffing, and we'll also continue to upgrade this. So when we look at our staffing right now, we're projecting a two hundred and fifteen student reduction at the elementary. However, remember that's without any kindergartners or early five students. So we had kindergarten roundup. It was actually really successful compared to some of the other times. For the first one, we have another kindergarten roundup. Excuse me, so as the parents start bringing in their information, we'll start filling our kindergarten slots and parents will start bringing that in throughout the summer, and so those numbers will start changing. And then you'll see those numbers change. So this helps us in this approval to start also asking teachers what their preferences are for next year and the buildings to start working with that as well. So next month, when we bring this to you for the elementary school, we'll ask you to approve the elementary staffing and then we'll start, the teachers have already had a little note that says, if you have a request for a transfer, if there's a place you'd like to go, send me a note. And then we start working as an administrative team to start placing teachers for next year and try to get that out to them as early as possible so they can say, I'm interested in that, I'm not interested in that, and see what openings that we have.
Mr. Croupy?
Yes.
This is not, this is not including our center programs or our vendor schools.
I will show you that shortly.
Thank you. Sorry, it wasn't in our packet, so.
Nope, it's not in our, in your packet.
It will be next month.
We hope so.
Yeah, but it'll be in the next one. So if you look over here and it looks like this got scrunched a little bit, we are, actually, the staffing is exactly the same for the elementary at this point in time. So, you know, we have a reduction here and increase here in different classrooms depending on the number of children, but at this point in time, our staffing is the same. Where our staffing might change a little bit to next month are the special education teachers based upon students. You still have to dig in that a little bit more, look to make sure that the resource teachers, that there's enough support there. As you know, you added a teacher this year for support there. So we're looking pretty much stable at this point in time.
What's the red one?
That was the special ed piece. And for next month, you'll have all of this in your packet so that you can digest every grade level. And we'll have updated students because we go in and update these students having and flowing in, like we, we're getting new students all the time. We have people moving into Hazel Park. We're getting Hazel Park residents. So students can come, we'll add these students as they come in. Questions about elementary?
Were you able to get your three third grade teachers over at Hoover because we read that one left?
Yes, we do. We have our three third grade teachers at Hoover. After the winter break, they'll all be starting and we'll be able to move our, one of our third grade teachers into our literacy coach position. So we have one literacy coach position to fill. We were also able to fill our E L teacher position for the first time in a year and a half.
Yay.
And so we'll, we were able to fill that position as well.
So you have all your staff moving?
Uh, well, no, but.
No.
We're working on it. It's a constant work and progress. At the junior high, we're looking at staffing being, our student numbers being pretty stable. When we look, what we do is we roll up the fifth graders into the junior high and we roll the eighth graders out. So you can see pretty consistently, we've been at five oh four in two thousand fifteen sixteen. We're projected to be at five twenty nine for next year. So we're pretty stable. So I'm not looking at any staffing changes and our special ed numbers are the same as well. At this point in time, pretty consistent. So we're not, at this point, we're not looking at any staffing changes. Numbers were at thirty six point seven, thirty six point seven. So everything will be pretty much the same. So you can see that bubble we had this year go through. Our junior high high school has leveled off for us in this upcoming year. At the high school, we have a reduction of three hun, or thirteen students, not three hundred students. When, again, when we bring up our eighth graders, you can look that, that we had a small class last year of one seventy seven. We have pretty much the same, one eighty one. It's pretty much the same size class. So that's labeled off. For a couple of years, we had higher freshman classes of two hundred. And then you can see we've labeled, we've kind of leveled off across the board. So last year, we had seven hundred and fifteen students. We have seven hundred and twenty eight. So actually, that's an increase. I think that, that formula was in there a little backwards there. Also, in the special education, you can see that that's pretty consistent as well. There might need to be, we might need to look at resource a little carefully because there's an increase in students.
Your mouse is moving pretty good.
Thank you.
There is a decrease in one teacher at the junior high in the area of English. As you know, this year, we were fortunate enough to have Kendall Smith join us as our alternative school principal. For second semester, we did not fill that English classroom at this point in time when speaking to our high school administration, they did not feel that we needed to fill that again for next year. So at this point in time, we're not recommending that we bring that back up. So you'll see a reduction of one point oh for next year. Any overall?
What do you have right now?
In, in English or overall? So overall, we have forty four point, I think it says three eight, and we'll have forty three. So we'll just have a reduction of one teacher. Are you asking how many English teachers we have?
Yeah.
Should we go back to the beginning of here? Currently, we have, it says seven, but we really have six point five because mid-year, we didn't fill that position for second semester. So we, we will have six for next year. Questions? For our preschool programs, same, everything at this point is remaining the same. If GSRP contacts us and says, you know, we could have more classrooms, we might ask for another additional teacher, but right now, we have everything stable and consistent at our GSRP program, sixteen point two last year, sixteen point two for next year as well. Our center programs are a little different, however. So recently, we were alerted at our A S D program, given the amount of students we have, that we were overstaffed. So for next year, at this point in time, we're looking at a reduction of two teachers, down to two. We may next month say, I'm going to request for four, but I'm only going to fill two depending on the numbers. But at this point in time, we'll be reducing that down to two teachers. All the other programs remain the same across the board at this point in time. But what you will see in here is an addition of our programs due to the building on Edison Max, which is a wonderful thing for Oakland County as well as Hazel Park. And that is the Edison Max Post High Program and the Edison Max A S D Program. Both those programs are additions based upon our agreement to bill and retrofit the Edison Max Program. So there will be three teachers that we will be adding to those programs and then additional sites, social workers, and speech that we've placed in here. So we'll be looking at an increase of almost eleven staff members in the center programs, given these two programs. And again, we will only staff that many teachers if that many students come to Hazel Park. Currently, Michelle Kraus and Tamara are reaching out to the other school districts to determine how many potential students they have next year. We would post them as students are enrolled into the programs and we know that section of the building is, is finished. Questions about those additions? At the district level, everything is remaining the same except we are going to request an additional psychologist. One of the issues that we run into in the program is that we are significantly understaffed in the area of district school psychologists. We've had to go out and get some private contractual services. And so we're going to be asking for a one point oh increase of school site in order to keep up with the number of evaluations at the district level, but also maybe to help mitigate evaluations occurring as well. When our school sites are out, supporting the classrooms, coming up with interventions, talking with the teachers, we're also able to talk about different supports and services that teachers can be providing inside the classroom before we get into interventions. So, or before we get into evaluation. So it's a, more support, I think, was really needed to make sure we're giving that full support to our teachers, to the buildings and to the schools. We would see this split among the buildings, probably a full-time psychologist at the high school, a part-time split at the junior high and between the elementaries. We really could use more, but we have to do baby steps to make sure we can afford that within our budget. And then at the alternative school program, at this point in time, based upon enrollment, we are not requesting an increase. We would leave all of that staffing to be the same. So very small increase happening in the center program, a decrease in the high school, stay the same at the elementary, and a one point oh increase for a school site at this point in time at the, at the district level. Do you have any questions?
Dr. Crouby, can you talk about, you mentioned when teachers want to kind of put in their preference for going back to a certain classroom, going back to a school, kind of how that process works from beginning to end, if I'm a teacher?
So every year around this time, we'll send a note out to them and we send it in our weekly update that we send out to teachers and, and say, if there's a preference or something that you'd like, please place a note to me that you're interested in transferring. So when that happens, if there's an opening, we send that to the building principal or we may simply talk to the building principals and say, you know, is this something that we can do? Or if we now have two classrooms, three classrooms instead of two, we would send that to the building principal. The building principal has the choice, right? We do have the choice of placement, but we've really tried over the last couple of years to place teachers where they'd like. And it's really difficult when you've had to go in a system and close schools. And so people over time, right, have been placed sometimes in places maybe they didn't want to go. And as you have openings, you're able to move them to where they really wish they could be and want to be. And so we really try to honor that as much as possible that we can to get people back where they'd like to be. But building principals have a, a large say in that with the culture of their building and what they'd like to have happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you.
Great information.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item eleven, overnight request on girls soccer. Can I get?
I make a motion we approve the overnight for the girls soccer team.
Support. Any discussion?
Oh, have fun.
Yeah, this is their overnight in Oscoda. I know they go, I don't know how many years they've gone, but they've gone previously, so.
Good luck.
Yeah. All right, roll call.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right, item M, contractual speech pathologist. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion we approve the contractual speech therapist.
Sick of his job.
Yeah, he needs help.
I support the motion.
He might work on me.
You're doing a great job.
I support the motion.
All right, discussion. Dr. Crouby, can you speak to this?
I'm going to let Mrs. Dillard, our director of student services, speak.
Good evening, Howard.
Hi.
So I am before you to request a contractual speech pathologist. So our current speech path at Webb Elementary is on medical. She's been on there for about two weeks now. Her caseload is around the low forties. And so we need coverage to cover her caseload, to cover I E P meetings, evaluations, other kinds of meetings for her students. So in order for the best service delivery for the students that she services, we need someone to come in on a contractual basis. I'm working with the same company who is contracting our school psychologist to Detroit Institute for Children. So we are working right now to find that person. And so that's my request for this individual.
All right, so for everyone listening, this is on a need, a need basis. It's not a full-time or?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I have, I, I guess it would be, I don't know who I would direct to, maybe Dr. Crouby. With our services that we're giving the kids for like speech or however, can we, can, do we have a log that the students are actually getting the services that they need? That's something that, you know, I'm really concerned, like maybe we're missing it somewhere. So I guess it would be for all of our specials that kids get pulled out of classrooms that there's a log that says we seen them.
So every ancillary staff member, so speech path, social workers, they maintain like a service log of their interaction every single day and every single like timeframe that they meet with students. So name, date of service, and work on I E P goals or what they worked on during that session. They keep that in their private documentation. And if we're ever out of, they can pull up that documentation log and they can say met with so and so on this day and time and this is what we discovered and went over. That also helps them for progress reporting when they send home progress reports to parents on I E P goal progression. So each ancillary staff does keep their own documentation log on each student that they service.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Simple?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item N, superintendent update. So Dr. Crouby?
I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Delmich, who's going to give you on your yearly board calendar in the month of February. You have asked for a STEAM STEM update, and so we are giving you a STEAM STEM update on where we are in the schools.
Good evening. So I get an opportunity to come up here and talk about all the great things going on in Hazel Park. And so what I'm going to do is just give an update. It's not going to go over all the things that we're doing in STEAM and STEM throughout the district, but really focus on some of those things that are new and also kind of highlight some of the classes that you approved a year ago to be implemented at the high school. So the first thing I wanted to highlight is the fact that we are continuing our work with First Robotics as well as, as we've added one team. So this year, for the first time, we've had a First Lego League junior team, and that's actually the team that I'm going to do a little highlighting on in a few minutes. We were hoping to have a team at Webb Elementary. At this point, we have not been able to secure a coach. So Webb Elementary, parents and, and staff, if you want to coach for robotics, give me a call. Hazel Park Junior High is up and running. We have some great parents that are running that team. And our Hazel Park High School Robo Drakens are in the midst, in the thick of building their robot. And we will be sharing soon the different competitions that they're going to be attending and allow you to attend those as well. They're great events to go see, especially the Hazel Park High School Robo Drakens. Their first competition is in Center Line, which isn't too far, and they're there all day Friday and all day Saturday. So there's a lot of opportunities to go visit. I would encourage you to do that. So this just gives you a little bit of a glimpse into what our Hoover Space Huskies did this year. And once again, this is Hazel Park or the Hoover First Lego League junior aunt team, and this is about six students. They're generally small teams because the goal is really to get a lot of involvement for the students. And basically, at this level, it's really introducing them to the foundation of working together as a team, to be designers, to be problem solvers. Components of this are to build a robot, so they do build a basic robot as well as doing some reach, research on a problem. And this year, the focus was to work to figure out how to survive on the moon. So one of the big highlights is, because we know that there are always fewer girls in those STEM disciplines, half of the team was made up of girls. That's a really positive goal. We hope that continues as we move up into the grades. We know that the junior high actually just visited the team the other day, and I would say at least half, maybe more, are girls as well. I think we actually may have had one girl join the high school team this year as well. So we're really pushing that and, you know, it's a highlight of one of the things that happened well. So part of their presentation at the event is to show off their robot. They also have to show off their research and talk about their problem solving. I had the opportunity to visit and one of the things that's just wonderful about First Robotics is the fact that we have our, give our kids an opportunity to learn how to communicate, to speak in front of people. So basically, what happens at this level is there really isn't a competition like there is at the high school or the junior high. But basically, what they have to do is they have to stand in front of a group of judges. They have to talk about their robot. They have to show how it works. They have to talk about how they built it. And it really gives them that opportunity to stand up in front of people, communicate, and talk about what they learned. And that's actually what you're going to see on the next slide, I believe. Nope. This is about their award. We have a little video to show you. This is a demo of the kids showing me at the competition what their robot would do. And then, one of the most important things is the impact on our students. So I'll let you go ahead and read some of those thoughts. This was a really wonderful, positive opportunity. As a matter of fact, our coach, Mrs. Blazinski, went through this the first time, kind of with a little hesitation because when you take this on, it's a lot to take on. And anybody who's been involved in anything related to robotics knows there's a lot of big learning curve, not only for the kids, but also for the adults involved. One of the things that she did was shortly after that, she gave me kind of a cute, funny email. She said, hey, she said, I'm asking for a friend. Could we maybe have another team in the spring? It was really her really wanting to engage in it again because she saw so many positive things happening for students. The next thing I want to do is talk a little bit about what's going on at the high school. We once again have our First Robotics team I mentioned, our First Robotics Club, or sorry, that shouldn't say first. It should say H P H S Robotics Club is alive and well. And we're going to talk about some of the things that they've been doing this year. We also added Principles of Engineering as our Project Lead the Way course. And as you recall, last year, we added a Lean Fundamentals course. So I'm going to show you a few highlights from those. So this right here is showing some of the work that they do in Principles of Engineering. And one of the things that they did was we purchased Vexed Robotics, and that's a key component of what was used last year in the robotics class as well as what's used in Principles of Engineering. The next piece is showing a compound machine that the students were building and they were using digital force sensors. And I'm going to be honest with you, I don't even know what a digital force sensor is. But Jeff Spiezzak does, and he's doing a wonderful job of building those skills and really helping our kids broaden their experiences with this new engineering course. And the next piece shows the students building their solar and hydrogen powered vehicle. And that gave them an opportunity to determine whether wiring these power sources in a series or parallel circuit would produce more energy. One of the key components of introduction to engineering and principles of engineering is learning how to use Autodesk software, which is a CAD software. And you can see this is a drawing that a student did of an isometric drawing and the orthographic projections. So this is a key foundational skill that we build. We not only build at the high school, but we are also doing some work in. We not only build at the high school, but we are also doing some work in the junior high as well in some of the engineering courses. So, this is a really strong pathway that we've built for our students. And this right here is Jeff showing off a little video tutorial here. But this gives you a little insight into what the students are doing with the CAD software. Oh, guess that video's not playing.
We'll do the combination example. We're on the ready, then we'll start the sketch. We're gonna start the main part. Starting a sketch. I'm typically go X-ray plane. And I'm not gonna do it based on any correct measurements. I'll let you look at the slideshow and figure out the correct measurements. We got a sketch there. Finish, extreme, around eighty-five plus. Good enough. And we will edit on the front face to get that a little yellow shape. We got a rectangle here. End of sketch. Extreme, and we want to go the other way. Now, we can start another two-dimensional sketch. End one, I guess we'll go here first. Make a rectangle that we want it to be cut out. End of sketch. Extend the other way. Okay. Well, that's nice. So, we got extrusion three.
Brad, it's okay to go ahead and stop that. I really just wanted everybody to see a little bit about what they're doing with that software. And one of the things that they have started to do a little bit is that's basic software that obviously designers use all the time. But it also gives an opportunity for students to build with Autodesk software and also to print things on a 3D printer. So, this is a little glimpse into the Lean Fundamentals course. There's a lot of, obviously, a lot that goes into that course. This really demonstrates one of the simulations that they work on, and that's a key component of the Lean Fundamentals course, building those lean rules and principles. And it just shows you what some of the students are doing. Basically, the simulation is having students simulate that they are on a production line, a car production line. They actually use little dagos, you know, those wonderful tools that we've had around for years. And basically, what they do is they go through the production of building those, and then they have to analyze their data. They have to look at what worked, what didn't work, and look at their fail points and improve their design and improve their process, and then keep processing through that until they come up with a streamlined way of building those little cars and making their production line work. These are some of the competitions the Hazel Park High School Robotics Club have been involved in this year. They are once again attending the wonderful things put on at Lawrence Tech University with Robofest. They will be attending the senior game and the senior bottle sumo at Robofest. They are also involved, just like last year and in many years past, into the Square One sponsored competitions, which are the Mini Innovative Vehicle Design, the Autonomous Vehicle, and the Autonomous Vehicle Design with Square One. So, another thing that Jeff has been doing is he's really been doing a lot to reach out to the community to really make sure that he's not only giving his students an opportunity to build their engineering design skills and the robotic skills, but also really to reach out to different organizations and employers to really expand their knowledge and help our students think about what they might do as they leave high school. So, one of the things that he's going to be doing actually at the end of February is the GM Heritage Center Tour. And this gives him an opportunity to tour the, so, the tours are led by retired GM designers and engineers and who are very involved in the development of cars. And this tour really gives them an opportunity to understand that whole process of design and engineering with former GM engineers. The next thing that Jeff is doing, once again, building that strong girls core in STEM, is that he has a group of twenty-some girls, twenty-five students, who have the opportunity to attend Cranbrook STEM Conference. And another positive piece, they're gonna cover the cost for it. So, we've got a lot of support from our community, a lot of support for our girls, and really building that STEM pathway. And the very last one is actually new, actually is new to something that they've done at the high school. Prudence Rose from Must Construction Careers has connected with the high school, and they are going to be coming into the high school to talk to our students about some of those pre-apprentice and apprenticeship programs that they might pursue after they leave Hazel Park High School. And I think there's one more slide. And then, I just want to quickly mention some of our sponsors. The junior high team did not get back to me with their sponsors, but the parents that are running that have reached out to a number of businesses. The person who's running it, their business is supplying 3D printing material, all kinds of materials for them. Once I get those, I'll make sure to share those because we really want to recognize those people. United Oaks was supported by the UAW Local 400 this year. And as we know, Hazel Park Creative Arts and Key Site Technologies supported the high school this year. That's the end of the presentation update. What questions might you have for me?
That's just great.
I don't have any questions for you, but just want to comment that the things that you're putting out here that our kids are actually learning, this is just happening in industry right now. It's happening in the auto industry, the electric vehicle industry, oil and gas, aerospace, all of it. I see it every day at work, and I'm very excited that our kids are getting a really early opportunity to look at these things like lean technologies and things like that that are not going anywhere and will help them later in life.
And I think one of the key pieces too is really having that Project Lead the Way. I mean, we have a strong foundation with Project Lead the Way at our middle school. We have a strong building program at our high school. And having that First Robotics piece in is really bringing well-rounded opportunities. And as we can see, we're now getting the girls involved. You know, we're having the young men and the girls involved in really building that foundation and really thinking about some of those career pathways they might pursue.
Great.
Great information.
How many students are in your robotics club at the high school?
I don't have the exact number. I could get that for you. I do know, I'm gonna say, when I talked to Jeff earlier in the year, I want to say between twenty and thirty. And they're all, what's really nice about the team, and I think this is how it was run in the past too, is that there are so many different opportunities. The kids don't have to really just do one thing. There are many different opportunities, many different teams, and many different pathways they can pursue. You know, so if they want to focus on that innovative vehicle design, that's what they focus on. If they want to focus on Robofest, that's what they focus on. So, a lot of different great opportunities. I'll try to make sure that whenever they attend these events, I'll get them in the board, weekly board update so you can attend. I know that Dr. Croupy always adds those wonderful events and all the things going on in our school district. I'll make sure to do that.
Okay, thank you.
And I think I just want to add one more thing that I'd like to just go on the record with the board that I believe the work environment in central office is very positive. It's been a privilege to work with Amy Croupy and the team she's put together, and I just want to make sure that that is shared with the board. It's wonderful to be in a district that's really being forward-thinking, thinking about working together as a system, which is really key in what we need to be doing. I mean, anyone who knows in business, that's the key place that we need to be. Change is hard, and sometimes when change is hard, we have those bumps in the road. But, you know, change, really positive, innovative change takes three to five years to happen. We're in year three. As I said, I'm privileged and honored to be here, working under a superintendent that has that vision. And in no way, shape, or form have I ever felt that the work environment is negative. It's one of positive, it's one of problem solving, and it's one of moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good information. I'm really excited about that programming. All right, we're still on our superintendent update. So, last was the strategic plan.
We had enrollment.
Oh, enrollment, sorry.
Getting tired.
So, our February count day is coming up. So, I placed in the packet for you to take a look. And sorry, you have to kind of circle it around, but I think it was done for you on the screen. So, you can see what our current enrollment, and this isn't FTE, right? So, when you go to getting your numbers and how much money you're gonna get for the business office purpose, that is percentage of students, what have you. These are actually heads, right? Heads of students. So, when we look right now, we're at thirty-two fifty-four. At the end of the school year, we were at thirty-two sixteen. I put in the February count of 2018 at thirty-three twenty-five. It is typical that your fall count historically, I think we've talked about this every year, is lower than your February count. We've traditionally always lost students. I think what Dan had said when he was here, we'd lose a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five from the fall, or from the fall into the February count. Last year, we did not. We'll see what the final numbers come in because the numbers come in a little different, right? They come in based upon, not by head, but they come in with percentages of students based upon programs. So, we're kind of holding our own to be consistent as we've always been in the past. There's a little bit of a reduction that's happening in the February count. Questions about enrollment?
What's the date of the count? Or when is that? When is the February count? Did you say?
I think it's Friday, is it not?
It's a half-day. We count it as a half-day.
Who's it thing?
Thirteenth. Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Tomorrow.
I'm just curious.
Wednesday, yep. I don't do anything with it. It's all done.
I didn't mean it to be a trick question. I just was curious because I didn't know.
It's this week.
Okay, got it.
Half-day on a half-day.
It's not a half-day, right?
No, Wednesday is a full-day.
Right.
When did you want to say, Chuck?
Sorry, Chuck.
No, I thought that Wednesday was a half-day.
What happens if, I mean, not that there's any impending weather for Wednesday though, but...
Oh, that's right. Grandma knows.
On the off chance that there's a snow day on account day, do they re-sign it by state or?
I am not sure, and I would guess that we all across the whole state will have that issue as you guys are probably saying, what is she doing on her phone over here? I am following our group chat about school tomorrow. So, if you're wondering, I'm not being rude or disrespectful in any way. I'm following the superintendents of Oakland County as we're talking back and forth, and I'm watching the thoughts about tomorrow and the storm. So, you know, I would imagine that if there's something that happens Wednesday, the whole state will have that issue. You know, some schools have been closed up to eighteen days already in the...
Wow.
You know, I heard that today with a group of superintendents. So, it's gonna be an issue for all of us. They'll have to rectify that for us.
Okay.
All right. Well, since she's still on attendance, if we do call tomorrow, please apply for that waiver. We don't need to yet, and they've told us, as they said in the conference, not to apply until April. And you apply for the waiver after you know how many days you are totally off. And they, they've recommended us, so the interim superintendent Sheila was there, and the guidance that she gave in the conference that we were at was to not apply until April or May when you actually know how many days that you have that you are gonna be closed because you never know, we could have a snowstorm in May. And so, she said to wait.
I saw her name.
So, yeah, so we absolutely, if we hit past six, we will apply. But you don't do it unless you passed, you go past six.
Tomorrow's six, if we call tomorrow.
Tomorrow's six.
Seven fifteen, guys.
Yes, tomorrow's six.
Okay.
All right.
Right.
Days missed.
We have five days missed so far. The six is how many were allocated, right? So, we have one more, and then we would be over where we might need to request.
And there's poor weather coming in for Friday as well. So, those of you that are, those of you that are Facebooking me right now and emailing me, we have not made a decision for school tomorrow.
You better watch the rumor mail here.
My phone is going wild right now.
I bet it is. All right, there's no more discussion on enrollment than a strategic plan.
Okay. So, this is just an update. We had all of our staff go through, and as you know, this is the last year for the strategic plan. And then, we're hoping to get some more stakeholder input about how they'd like to continue to move the district forward. So, we put in green for you updates since the fall. So, I know that we did an update for you in the fall. And so, really, this was just for your reading. I'm not gonna go through and read all the different areas, but just to give you a different update, curriculum office put their updates in, we put some financial updates in. We placed an update in. Dr. Kraus put it in for PBIS. And so, these are all the areas that were identified three years ago. And we've had some discussion about pulling the community together again and having a look at this and talk about what are those objectives that they'd really like to see happen. Any questions about that?
No, that was my question about Miss Spieiner last year, what we were gonna do to formulate our next monthly year plan.
Would you like me to go through it slide by slide?
No.
No.
I don't know. Jimmy, did you want to drag that last meeting of yours out a little bit longer?
What's that?
Did you want to drag this last meeting of yours out a little bit longer?
No, I did want to say something. I think I can actually speak at some point. No, I don't want to keep everybody.
All right, well, let's go ahead and move into board member and administration comments.
I just want to thank everybody here. It's nine-thirty at night. Everybody's here for a reason. I hope that at least part of your reason, or the biggest part, is the children of this district. I grew up here. I went to school here. I was academically pretty good. Behaviorally, not. So, there were a lot of teachers who I remember very vividly. They made an impression on me, my parents, obviously. But they had to make a lot of accommodations for me. And but for their help, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't be doing anything. And it's the people in the community too that supported that. And the teachers, the administrators, everybody had a part in what I'm doing, what I did, what I have done. And we need to keep that in mind. There are kids in these buildings right now who are little monstrous versions of me. And I'd like everybody to keep that in mind when we're sitting here at nine-thirty wanting to get out of here, and she's playing Candy Crush.
One less dick.
I do want to thank you, and I wanted to thank Clint. He was the board president when I started doing this. And he remembers me from way back when. So, he had to get out of here. I just wanted to thank him because there's kind of an Alpha and Omega here. He's here, and Laura's here. I wanted to thank all of you for putting up with me. Thanks.
You'll be missed. Board comments.
Michelle.
Oh, I'm first, sure. I just wanted to say that I'm happy that the amendment for renewing Amy's contract passed. I don't think that right now is the time to change leadership in our district. I think that as a board, we are working on working better together. And I think that we will continue to work better together. And I see nothing but bright things for Hazel Park's future. My kids are here. They're doing amazing. I know that there's a lot of back and forth about open enrollment and those kinds of things. And, you know, it's unfortunate that it's come to that point that all of these districts have to do that to survive.
Yes.
I believe in Hazel Park because my kids are still here. That's why I'm sitting up here, and, you know, I will continue to believe in the district. So, that's all I have to say.
Well, Jimmy, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
I will miss you, but I've got your cell number, so I'll feel proud.
That was her way of saying you haven't heard the last.
What are you planning, Jimmy?
No, I do wish you well, though.
I don't think he's a divorce lawyer.
He has friends. Thanks. Appreciate it. Yeah. Um, no, but good luck to you. Kind of going off what Christie said. Me, I do think that we have made positive changes in our district. We have a lot to offer the kids. I just, I am not someone that's for open enrollment, never have, never will be. My kid, I like to refer to him as not being a dollar sign. We have good education. We may have to downsize, but if we were to take care of Hazel Park, I think we could still have the same programs, but we wouldn't have the staff, which would be the unfortunate part. As far as Dr. Croupy, I'm not on this thing to fire her, get rid of her. I never had the intentions of firing her. I just want to see the staff and the administrators work together. I would love to see that. I would love to extend her contract. You know, it's not something that I automatically would never, like you can never have an extension. I just want to see something happen positively within the schools. That's all I have with that. But other than that, thanks, thank you for coming out. Tammy, thank you for the...
Better late than never.
Yeah, better late than never, but thank you. Have a good night.
So, I'd like to say, Jimmy, you're going to be missed. I miss you a lot already. I know we've confided in each other over the years, and so, like Sue, I think we all have your contact number, so we're going to keep in contact to make sure that you're miserable in Oakland County and you want to come back. No, I'm kidding. We hope you do well in anything that you do. We hope you're a bright star there, as you've been a bright star here. So, wish you the best. I'd like to say thank you, Brad, for the really cool screens in front of us. That's cool. Yeah, just all the technology, you can see it around us, and I think we all were like, "What's going to happen today?", at least on those screens. So, thank you for that. Thank you to everyone who presented tonight or brought a presentation. I think it's wonderful to see all of our kids doing great things in the pictures and just kind of feeling a little re-energized with some of the donkey business that we had to get down to today. So, thank you for bringing those, and that just kind of breaks up the, breaks it up a little bit for us. I'd like to comment a little bit on the conference on Friday that I was able to attend with the MASA and MASV. I signed on a presentation with the MDEs, Top 10 on 10, and they were kind of talking about some of the struggles that face school districts, and I was feeling kind of refreshed that the problems that we have as a district are the problems everywhere that everyone's having. So, and they were going, "How do we do less with, how do we do more with less, and how do we get our kids here?". And MDE was really kind of talking about this thing called MyKIP, which is going to be a new software they're going to come out with. And it really focuses on the ASCD whole child, something that we're already doing here really well as a district, and really gathering that data about how kids do better with nutrition, how they do better with interventions, how they do better with understanding their social and emotional support. And so, it was really exciting because people were talking about it, and I said, "Oh, yeah, we're already doing that." So, and then using our funding and 31A and title dollars differently and kind of overlapping them to get programs in for our kids. And so, the state's kind of thinking like that, and we're already kind of doing that. So, hats off to all of our administrators and staff for having your creative thinking caps on, and I think it was, I felt really great out of that. Did some reflection, I was preparing for my, the board meeting too this time. I know we all have day-to-day things going on in our lives. I think I have a magnet that says, "It's not the crisis that wears you out, it's the day-to-day living", or something like that. It's like a lady pushed back with her head. But I found this really cool quote by Willie Nelson, and I wanted to encourage us to all be a little more like him. It says, "Once you replace your negative thoughts with positive ones, you'll start having positive results." So, I really hope, I like Willie Nelson, and I thought it was clever. I think I'm just going to spend a little more time focusing on the positive and what I can change and what we can be a part of. And I encourage everyone to do the same. So, Happy Valentine's Day, Thursday, and keep your, you know, your phones and your emails close as we make a decision about tomorrow. If you have to go out, be safe. And I appreciate everyone for getting up and talking tonight and sharing that feedback with us and participating in the process. So, thanks and have a good one.
On this side of the...
Okay, I want to thank Jimmy for all his years of service, and also Friday in the conference that our food service, Sam and Dr. Croupy presented in regards to our food service and how we have began with the breakfast carts. And it was very interesting that we're one of the first schools to start all of that. And Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Mr. Hubble?
Thanks, Jimmy, for leaving. I appreciate you. Abandon with all these women, I'm in trouble. No, other than that, thanks for all your service you've done with us and the district. You've been my, more or less my book on the end, so we've had fun. I've enjoyed talking with you. We'll be missed, and like you said, I got your cell, so if my kid's out of hand, I can have her call you. Other than that, oh, Brad, thank you for the monitors. I've been asking for it since last year. Looks great. I have to, hats off to Greg and them for the bright lights that we put in all our parking lots now. Still got a little bit of work to do at the high school with those lights. Other than that, oh, and Josie would like to say hello to all the board. I talked to her last week. She's slowly going where she's at. She's enjoying it, but hats off to her, and that's it for me for the... See you guys next month.
Yeah.
Yeah, it rolls around fast. I too went to the conference on Friday, and it was the first time they had superintendent and school board conference together. And I plan on doing some write-ups and sharing it with all of you, but the workshops I took was addressing the growing epidemic of behavior disruption in our schools, because it isn't just Hazel Park. Board Superintendent Communications was fabulous, working towards mastery. And Relationship Leadership, the foundation for a high-performing culture. And the theme through the whole day was building relationships and communication. And at the very end, when everybody gathered back, they had a very large screen with Governor Whitmer on there, and she also said that success is about building relationships. So, the theme carried through the whole entire day. So, I'll put something together for everybody. It's very, very enjoyable. I'd like to thank Mrs. Rice for coming, and if anybody knows how to contact Mr. Melching, I appreciate the comments. I know everything is not roses. I know there's always room for improvement. The vote tonight was for an extension that doesn't have to happen. Board policy is 90 days before the end of the contract. I see many wonderful things here, but I too, as Sue said, the teacher surveys, the people at the podium, not just tonight, but months ago, a year ago, the morale. If you have ideas, give us your ideas. I think that, you know, they talk about relationship, being a team. We need to maybe get some thoughts from you on how to do that better. I've also read you have one negative, and you have to put out 200 positives to take away that one negative. Dr. Croupy posts tons and tons and tons of stuff, but Facebook is still on the other end, and I think that we should not, I think we need a meeting. I think we should talk about the concerns, if it's 10 people or it's 100, we need to talk about it. Creative Arts, I think the work that they do is absolutely fantastic. The money tonight is a very dedicated group, small group of people that can do many wonderful things. You don't need 100 people to do something great, so nice job. The car wash, thank you, Mrs. Schultz, for recognizing Board Appreciation Month last month, and so we'll all be up at the car wash. The Webster presentation, very detailed, very nice, and I used to be a preschool teacher, so I love you guys. They, all the kids worship you there, and they just think you're a queen. I mean, it's a great, it's a great place, a great place to be. And then Youth Assistance, the Hazel Park Firefighters Bowlathon is on Saturday from 5:00 to 8:00, $25 at Madison Park. And they give to burn charities, I believe there's a cancer society, and they support Hazel Park Youth Assistance for a number of years now, so. Okay, thank you for coming out, hanging in there. Have a good week.
Dr. Croupy? Well, I also had an opportunity to go to the conference, and I think one of the things that I've shared for the high school level is something called ModernStates.org that one of the small school districts are doing that's for all, that gives high school students an opportunity to get college credit all the way through high school by clogging out of certain classes. And so, it's something that I've shared. I think it's, many of us in Oakland County had not heard of it before, and so we were really excited, and so we're going to investigate that and see if that's something here in Hazel Park, especially sometimes that'll allow kids that want to do some other things be able to take some of those classes and clog out of it and get some college credit. At this particular school, we had TED Talks, and this was a TED Talk. He, his children go out with an associate due to that. So, instead of early college, which is really difficult for us to afford, this is another alternative for a small school district to do things. So, I thought that was very beneficial. The other piece, I think, which I can't wait for the presentation to come out, really talked about the teacher shortage, that really drilled down to why that is, and it really centered around that in 2010, we ranked the 49th in the number of people that are moving away. So, people just aren't coming to Michigan, and that's part of the issue that we have with the number of students. It used to be 9,000 teachers that were in the, in the schools and the colleges to become teachers. Now, there's 3,000. And even though there were 3,000 openings only in Michigan, those certifications didn't match the positions that we needed last year, and so it's a significant issue that they're studying. They also talked about the fact that our student population in 1971 was 2.1 million, and today it's 1.48 million. And so, not only are we, people are leaving Michigan, our young ones are leaving Michigan for work in other places, but we're losing our teachers. And they said one of the primary things is that, they had a committee of superintendents to research this, and they went around the room and said, "How many of you have told people not to go into education?". And almost everyone on that committee raised their hand. And so, one of the things that we have to do is to continue to encourage our students. I think you see me do that all the time, encourage our students about how important education is, is because without our teachers, we don't have a future of educating, and I think that's really important here in Michigan. So, I think that was one of the most important ones. I also went to one on a superintendent board relationships and evaluation, which I think was really great. Rosie and I went to that together, and the relation, relational leadership was really great. And then also the third grade reading strategies that were done in Dearborn with our late state superintendent, Brian Winston, which was really moving. And they also gave a wonderful fountain in his honor to his wife and his daughter at the conference. So, it was a really great conference, really appreciated our board members coming and joining me there. I think it was their first step of really doing a joint conference together. I think it's really worthwhile. I also want to thank the board and the community for extending the contract an additional year. I think there's a lot of great work, but that great work happens because we have a great administrative team, and we have wonderful teachers inside that building that are very positive and supportive of the work we're doing. And change is hard. Going through this process is really difficult, and it's unfortunate when we struggle. It's something we always have to work on, and kind of what we call today in the workshop, recalibrating what we're doing and re-looking and communicate. And every Tuesday morning at 6:45, I invite all of you to come and join a very positive group that's really talking about how to recalibrate that and look at it in the district and make sure that we're reaching out to our teachers, and then they do that in their buildings, and I will continue to send you those notes. So, thank you again.
Okay. All right, I will finish with my comments. I want to thank Dr. Croupy for her service. We, I felt like we should extend the contract because she works hard for this district. We've asked for a lot of change. Change is hard, and I would like to see it through. We're seeing a lot of, there's a lot of good, there's a lot of challenges. No one's saying anything's perfect, but I'm, we're committed to working together collaboratively to have a successful district. I think that, you know, as being a board member, one of the things I've learned is just how complicated the school district is, you know? So, yeah, there's, there's great things going on, there's challenges that go on, and it all kind of comes together to move forward. So, we continue, I think, as a board, to be committed to making the right choices for the students. I think that everyone on this board cares about them and keeps that in mind when we vote. You know, I'm a parent, I have three kids in this district, they're thriving, they're